But the board knows that our twenty-two way mask going in at six o'clock.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll be out of here by then.
That would be great. I just gotta, just gotta say.
Okay, call the meeting order at five oh four. It is being recorded by Mr. Gant and by our recording secretary. Are you using your fancy pen?
No, I'm using mine.
Oh, your recorder, huh?
Fancy pen doesn't work anymore.
Uh-oh.
Not so fancy anymore.
Smart.
Well, okay, do you want to start with capital budget first? Do you want to go over the items that we had? Tell us how you reorganized.
Well, let's focus on the list of more articles which will tie into the capital budget. We're trying to really get bird's eye view of everything that's already included in the budget. And I know the warrants is our number one priority right now because that has to go to print next week. So there were a number of minor, some were just minor. I would say that the only outstanding questions that I have right now are, we're waiting to hear back from town council. They're doing a final review of the zoning bylaw amendments because they had a hearing, the public hearing. There were a number of changes that Selectman Gant had, the chairman of the planning board, Martha Morrison, had. Donna and I went through all of the changes, those should be all integrated in here. And we also had two members or two attorneys from Copelman and Page that were working on them. So I asked if Laura could talk with Amy to make sure that all of the final changes we have in here are the appropriate form. And that, because what I noticed might have happened is Laura looked at one and changed something before I did any changes. I asked her to rectify that with Amy. So I'm just waiting for her to get back to me with the final changes on the zoning. And then, but besides that, everything should be in good shape. And we can sort of walk through if you'd like. I gave you an itemized list of some of the changes. At this point, we're really going through with a fine tooth comb, making sure the i's are pro- the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. We did some minor, just in a general sense, we were making sure that when you're talking about top field bylaws, that it's B Y dash L A Y. That it's two caps.
And a W.
Yes, L A W, sorry. But it's a capital B and a capital L, and so we went through. But if you're talking about a general bylaw as a word, it's lowercase without the hyphen. So little things like that. Selectman Gant had some updates, as did Debbie and Donna. So what you're looking at right here is really what we have. The only missing parts are going to be in Article Third because we still have a dollar sign with a line. And we need to rectify that with the FinCom this evening. I'll be going to the meeting as will Catherine, the town accountant, and we'll be working with them. I need to align schedules between myself, Catherine, Mike from the FinCom, and Karen so that we all sit down at some point between now and Monday to make sure all of our numbers are coming together and to see what the final votes will need. So our hope is that we get everything finalized except for these blank spaces. It's between Article Third, which represents the general operating budget number, and then the last article is number forty. And that is sort of the number. Those two articles represent the balanced budget. And then those really are the only holes or missing pieces at this point. You should note that even though we don't have them in the printed warrant right now, that it's not legally required, although it's been our tradition. But those are empty right now, but I didn't want to give anyone the impression that it's because we are behind schedule. These are typically left blank until the very last time that the FinCom and the financial management team comes together and figures out what those final numbers are in with the balanced budget. So most of the changes.
What is not legally required?
The way we do our warrant here is that we put in the proposed motions. That's not legally required to be in our warrant.
The FinCom's motions, yes, correct. Okay, I got it. I just wanted to.
Okay. So are there any particular questions or issues that have come up since I sent you a version this afternoon? We, again, we went through again, made some final tweaks. Again, just looking for those little nits to make sure that we've dealt with all of those. But in general, is there any questions or thoughts on where we stand right now with the annual town meeting warrant?
Well, when we left the meeting last week, it was.
Monday.
Monday.
Jesus.
Three days ago.
It seems like, it seems like a month ago. Article twenty-two and Article thirty-four needed to be cleaned up.
Yes.
When I go to Article twenty-two, I now find that it's.
They're renumbered.
Okay, hold on. Okay, yes. Good catch there. Okay, so they are numbered differently. One of the other changes is because, and going back and forth, the revolving funds article was voted last year. We did a bylaw and we did an article to basically establish the limits. That was taken off this year because it was my understanding that when we voted that last year, that that meant that we didn't need to include it in the warrant every single year unless there was going to be a change. So that would mean if we wanted to add a revolving fund or if we wanted to change the limit of the individual fund. Apparently, in talking and running this through town council, the D O R has not come out with their I G R or their guidelines. And so there seems to be a little bit of ambiguity with regard to whether or not we have to continue to put that revolving fund warrant article in every single year or if it could be left out, which is what we all thought was the intent of the Municipal Modernization Act. To be on the safe side, since D O R has not made a determination or issued its guidelines yet, town council recommends that we include the revolving fund article. And all you're really doing is just approving it in the limits the same way we did it last year. We're putting it on here just to be, you know, very safe and make sure that we're covered.
So that's the tenth.
So that, yes, that turned into Article the tenth, which meant that everything else had to be moved in all of the numbers. And then we were making sure that where it said, as referred to in Article twenty-fifth, that that was actually still the Article twenty-fifth. So we were checking to make sure that all our numbers were consistent. So that was one major change.
Okay, so Article twenty-two on Monday now is Article twenty-three.
Yes, and so Article twenty-three, and that is page nine. Okay.
Which is the comprehensive records management.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Correct. So what I did to this article is we are basically scaling back the scope of this. Originally, we had, I had framed out some various steps in doing some more research and talking with a consultant from King's Information Systems. Have been able to rescale this project. We are only going to be requesting forty-five thousand, which will enable us to implement a comprehensive records management system specifically targeted to our land use departments. And depending on, because it's not an exact science, but we wanted to make sure that we could at least cover our land use departments. So that would include build inspectional services, cons comm, board of health, and planning in the Z B A files. What are, that's our target. And if there's any remaining funds, what we would be trying to do with that is to make sure that we would incorporate. So it's intended to be a broad records management system, but we're specifically aiming the land use departments. And the reason why is because when we move back into the new town hall, all of those departments are going to be located in one physical office space. And we want to make sure that as much as the scope of this article allows, that we'll be able to set up a system whereby all three of those departments and all the inspectors will have full access to a categorized inventory system. We'll be able to identify what are the records we currently have, what is redundant, what can be destroyed before we move back to town hall. And so this will allow us basically a master plan to be able to move forward. So what I did is, I'm assuming forty-five thousand. I would hope, like we would with any warrant article, that that is money that, once we go through the process of having this person go through all of our records, she's here right now trying to quantify that number. She felt that that was a comfortable number that we would be able to use and that within the next few days and certainly before town meeting, but hopefully by the April twenty-third meeting, I will have a report from you that will sort of quantify exactly what that quote is or the estimate anticipates for this project. So that left capital funds on the table that had been originally earmarked for this project. What this allows us to do to scale back, we won't be doing any scanning, we won't be buying any software. What we'll be doing is starting with the master plan first, creating our roadmap, and being able to, if, once we set up this system, then we can look towards future years of maybe adding to the scope of this. But right now, to keep it focused on the roadmap is, was important and allows us sort of the biggest bang for our buck before we move back to the town hall.
You go.
No, good.
Go. You mentioned, if, you made a statement a bit ago that said if there's any money left. Does that mean if you sign, you're going to sign a contract for this? Does that mean?
You as the board will.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that mean it's going to be enough to exceed?
Yes.
Contract, or it's going to be an hourly contract? Or are you going to pay them by the hour?
It wouldn't be by the hour. I will have more specific information within a week when they give me their report. And they'll tell us exactly what they'll do and the scope of that. And what I've expressed to them is land use is certainly our target, but my hope would be that we could have it be as comprehensive as possible so that we have a framework for all the departments, not just land use, but for all of our departments.
So the study that you said would be maybe two grand out of your discretionary fund, the funds you have.
The professional services.
Professional services funds, I didn't mean discretionary. Discretionary in terms of you need them for professional services.
Yeah.
Two things. One, so that would include both outlining and sculpting the size of this project, but also outlining and sculpting what a future piece would be as well.
Correct, yes.
And the last time I thought we talked, that wasn't it number forty thousand?
It was, but I want to make sure, forty will definitely cover land use. But I wanted to make sure that we had a little bit of a cushion in there so that until we get a refined number, and we had enough with the other funds. So I put a little, I was able to put a little bit more into our capital, our town facilities fund.
No, I'm just looking at that, seemed to be creeping, and I was wondering why.
Yes, so that is to make sure that we have enough to just do land use, but also have a widening the lens for any other departments that we could intertwine with this. So I was using a best guess for that.
So I'm a little confused. The land use applications, which are listed right here, I thought would be in the forty thousand and that the remaining would be a future project. But what I hear you saying is that additional five thousand might cover some of the other stuff, but we don't know what.
Right now, I don't know, correct.
Okay, I'm just, I'm wondering.
I mean, my ideal project would be doing comprehensive for the entire, for all.
I realize, but you originally indicated a hundred thousand dollars to do that. So I'm going to make no, I'm going to make no assumption that forty-five thousand in any way could cover everything. And so I think it's better if we say we're going to pass an article for the land use ones that we sort of officially limit it to that. There's money left over that we can put in the future if we choose to. But I think just sort of saying, and maybe some other stuff seems.
That's fine.
Not so hot.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to make it clear that our focus is land use. And to the extent that it ties in with, say, the Board of Selectment records that are related, that, so, until I get that report, that detailed report.
No, I understand.
It's not an exact science.
You said something that I didn't see as entirely reflected in what was written here. And that's what I was trying to do, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Clearer now.
Your question was referenced also to the two thousand dollars, and I just wanted to call back. The two thousand is really to help with this forty thousand, kind of get organized and understand more detail what it is. But John, you mentioned, and for the future. It really isn't for the future, it's only for the purposes of what's right here.
That's what I'm saying, but there was the, and maybe if there's more, it might roll over and so on and so forth. I wanted to be sure that we weren't looking at that number as a start on something else. If there's money left over, then we can do more. The project is going to be for land use.
My understanding of the two thousand is a kicker to ensure that the, how the forty thousand, forty-five thousand is going to be worked out.
That's the plan of the whole thing.
Yes, exactly.
Just forty and the future.
What?
According to what I understood.
And usually, no, that's the same, no.
That you're going to do a little bit of a, I asked if you were going to scope beyond that, scope out the other things with two thousand.
No, the issue is the ambiguity of the management system and how it's all intertwined together with the other departments. And that's not clear yet until we get more information from the consultant.
Okay, that'll be a report that when it comes in, we can.
Absolutely. And this company does this in many other municipalities, so they have a lot of great experience. And what they're doing now is physically coming in and looking, opening up the cabinets and looking at them and saying, well, we estimate this many pages and this is what we're going to do. And they're pulling samples and they're looking at our maps.
No, no, what they do, what they do is they open the cabinet and they say, oh my God. That's what they say.
Yeah, no, that's what I say when I open it. They're looking at it and they're saying, okay, how do we get this managed and inventory?
Well, I remember what it looked like when all this was in the basement of the old hall. I said, oh my God.
Yeah, and we certainly don't want to.
To be fair, to be fair, we've had senior workforce doing work, eliminating some of the duplicates in the conservation commission file for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So it isn't as if there had not been some work done on the whole of the town. But give ourselves some credit for what was done in the last couple of years, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on that subject?
I do have comments on that warrant article, I do, as far as text, but not reference to the dollars that we're talking about or what is included in it, correct.
So you're crossing P's and dotting I's?
I, hopefully, I'm going to go through the, Kelly's talking now and going through some things. And you gave us a nice summary when you sent this out at three o'clock that said, these are the things that have happened since. So that was excellent. But I think you're going to continue with that. But when you're finished, then I think we need to go through and see the things that we've changed and what additional things that we may have come up with in the last two hours.
Okay.
Well, I'm not.
Everything else is pretty soon.
I'm not in favor of going through this item by item like we did on Monday.
No, I want to go through the places that I think we should make a change.
It's a change that's not apparent on Monday.
Let me tell you what happened. It's not a problem, we just have to do it. We took out, for the Article Sixth, the capital things for mask and all, we took those out. And some of the wording was changed. But by the way, some of the wording refers to below. There's nothing below. We have to, it happens. We've been making changes. The good news is we're finding them now before they're in print. I want to get them out, I'm willing to go through them, willing, we need to go through them now, as soon as Kelly gets through finding what she's doing.
Where we've made a change? Where you've, where you've decided we need to make a change?
Well, I have seen in the last two hours, things that need to be fixed.
Well, okay, on certain articles, not on every article.
Yes, 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 right on.
I want to go through certain articles that you're willing to say I need to make a change, but I don't want to go through line item by line item.
Good idea.
Okay.
I have one question, I think it goes before we do that. So on Article Third, once, so, once your, the title of financial team and the FinCom read and do whatever they do, some idea of what they, in, in help with a final number, then does the last line with the asterisk apply or does that get deleted?
The asterisk you referred to, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, might have something with that, that would be deleted unless there's any, yeah.
Well, sure, because once you put those numbers in, it's not subject to change.
Well, that's not true, though.
It has to be amended.
It could, no, no, that's not true. The motions that are listed in here are for informational purposes. If the FinCom decided to change their recommendation, they can do that. But typically, they don't because people get all riled up if we change it after.
Then they would, one of the FinCom people would walk up to the podium and say.
Right, yes, exactly, right.
But for purposes of the printing of the warrant.
Yeah.
Is that last that's coming out?
I intend to take that out.
So you, this is actually intended to be a clerical comment. You got that flag, because it's really easy to miss that.
Yes, yes.
Because it's just kind of sitting there.
Yeah, yeah.
So the two asterisks would come out in there?
Correct.
And I think as a board, we totally agree that that will not be in the warrant. It's not an option. Those asterisk items like that will not be in the warrant, okay? I think there's two or three places under the card.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information. I see asterisks on the front, ones and twos, if I don't see a footnote, is that what you're talking about?
There's a, no, there's a footnote.
So.
Ones and twos.
Those are consent agenda items.
So that's the other note.
We'll vote those as groups.
Both ones and two?
And I'm going to add a footnote.
Two different groups.
I didn't see the footnote, so I was wondering.
You know what, I was just going to mention that I have to add a footnote to this.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I need to add the footnotes that say consent agenda items. And I need to add, I need to take out omnibus from this. So I will make some, and that's what we had last year, it's just that I changed the format. It used to be more, this is in, um, Excel.
However, you were trying to make it clear that there's two groupings.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a significance to whether that's one star or just.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I want to do a little housekeeping. Let's go to Article thirty-four, which is probably now Article thirty-five. Because thirty-four is one that we needed to clean up last Monday.
Tell me the title and not the number, so I make sure that it's all in the same page.
It was the overly district.
Overly district is now Article thirty-five on page fifteen.
We were waiting for it last night.
We were just waiting for it.
Meaning.
Yes, so page fifteen.
Yeah, we were waiting for it, yeah.
Yeah, so page fifteen of twenty-three.
And I believe that's passed, did they approve? You got confirmation on that, Kelly?
This, yes, this has been worked over by the planning board chair, Selectman Gant, town council.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, I worked with Martha Morrison this morning with this, changes that I had suggested. And we came to agreement on the various things. And then I worked with Donna Rich to incorporate them in.
Really small thing that was mentioned earlier, I mean, if it's possible to not have a title at the end, okay, you could have a page name.
Well, yeah, there's some pagination that I noticed as well.
Understood. Yeah, yeah, no, that's the last thing that I usually do because it just, I would be spending all day.
Yeah, we're just doing it a regular.
Widows and orphans.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want the widows or orphans.
You be. Okay, now, I guess what I want you to do, Kelly, is go, start at the top of the list and go through only the items on the articles, articles that you changed. And I don't care about, I'm not talking about punctuation.
Yeah, but that's all pretty much what I did, except for what I just explained.
You gave us that list, too, that was a very good list when you sent it out. Maybe it's worth it to just read your email, we have a copy.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
Yeah, good, I bet you didn't, okay, that would be helpful.
I don't think I have it, but I can remember.
What was it? What was the list of articles that were changed?
Yeah, there's just a list of what she changed.
The nature of what was different from Monday to now. It was a good summary.
Okay.
Latest revisions, three oh seven P M.
Yes. One of them was water enterprise budget, we got those numbers.
I can read it if you want to.
Yeah, that would be great.
That just reads receipt, see, this, see, if I.
Where are you reading?
I'm on my phone. Town council's.
Article, which I can read.
I'm just reading, indeed.
Okay.
Town council's edits were incorporated as need. Selectman Gant's minor revisions were included. Debbie and Donna found some minor edits, so updated those. Water budget numbers were updated. Final language changes for Article Two and Three were updated with town council.
Who are you reading from, please?
This is the email from earlier.
Oh, the email that you sent, oh, thank you.
He's reading.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay.
Bylaws were still there. Article numbers are revised, revolving funds articles you talked about. That's all it says on here, that's the one.
So this means we believe we're okay with the warrant as it stands now. Well, you have a few other things.
Yes, well, since we're right here.
Is it a big pile or a small pile there?
Kelly has a, Kelly has a.
Is it a big pile or a small pile of changes?
It's a, hopefully, a small pile of changes. But, but since Kelly has brought out the warrant list here, which is hopefully a very easy draw when we do it, but, and you didn't point out the omnibus, but for example, number twenty-seven in this list starts out with.
With the N A S list.
Look, please, twenty-seven, twenty-seven. And if I turn to this, twenty-seventh starts out with tax deferral. There should be a one-for-one match, exactly the title as it's written there versus what we put in. The table of content should be the list. So I'm not, I'm not about to spend time now on.
You would like to.
I'm just saying that there's a lot of work that needs to be done to get this exactly right. For example, I remember.
No, that's easy. That's easy.
I remember the one that we did change, which was number, number thirty-eight. Remember that there's an S at the end of meetings. But we have to get them right. And it's not by eye like this, it ought to be drawn directly, hopefully, from the final, from the final warrant so that it's exactly right. So, all right, nobody wants to go through those in detail, right? I agree.
I don't, I don't, I didn't, I don't understand, what are you telling me she needs to do on number twenty-seven? I just don't like to understand.
I'm good, I'm good.
Can you tell me the concept?
I think what he wants to do, I think he wants to flip those two things.
Is that even flipping? There's no, the M L and all that doesn't exist.
I'm just getting rid of the, the reference.
He's getting rid of the statue.
This one's, see what this says.
That'll take two seconds.
So there's a number of those things that need to be, but they need to be the same. Otherwise, people are looking at the table of contents and then seeing the articles, they don't match up. Oh, it's close, well, that must be what it is.
They just want the title of the article to be the same on the, on the.
And with the reference ten mile, one, twenty, seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yep, next, next, Kelly got it, okay.
Thirty-eight is meetings goal.
Yeah.
So, can I give?
I'm going to, I'm going to give you the floor.
Okay, got it.
So you can do what you want to do, but let me tell you, if you get too long-winded, I'm going to try to shut you off.
Okay. Good luck, sir.
Yes, I know.
You're going to want these things. Okay, Article Six, in the warrant portion of it, the fifth line down begins with the word below. So this is the case that I mentioned where we have changed it, we haven't incorporated the stuff in there.
Attached.
So I think all we want to do is take the word below out, and I think we're safe. The alternative is to say, reference the attachment, attachment B. But the good news is, in the description, attachment B is in there. It's an option of what we want to do with that. I would say, however, that if we go then to the FinCom's recommendation there, which is the fifth line down, again, it starts out with in the warrant under Article Six, to simply replace those words with in attachment B. Shown in atta-, in other words, it'll read shown in attachment B. And I think that's very clear to anybody, the citizens reading it and to the FinCom when they make their recommendation. They're making it against a specific thing, attachment B. Do you see the fifth line, line down in the recommendation? Yeah, right there. It starts out with in the warrant.
Yeah.
Right? Just change the words in the warrant under Article Six to in attachment B.
Do we have an attachment B? That's the list of capital items.
Right.
That's the list of mask and all, capital items that they gave us on Monday.
Yeah, but.
I would suggest that we write under Article Six and atta-, in accordance with attachment B or and attachment B.
But it's not under Article Six. See, we, normally, we do this thing under Article Six when the text is in there.
It's inherent in saying under Article Six, so we don't have to read that whole list.
You don't have to read the whole list, they reference it.
Why can't we just say both, under Article Six and attachment B?
Because I think it's confusing to the citizen, there's nothing under Article Six to read, such as in the water department, you have a budget to read.
This and attachment A equals Article Six. Attachment B is a, an attachment to the warrant and doesn't tie back legally to Article Six.
Okay, that's what it does.
I'm getting into a, hold on one second. I'm concerned substantively about eliminating a reference to an article because it's the article that's being voted on.
Otherwise, we might have to sit there on the meeting, town meeting floor, reading the whole list.
I don't mind the clarification, the style, but I don't think you want to just have a recommendation leading to an attachment. And it's not clear if it's incorporated or referenced into the article.
I could just put both, or I can ask town council to tell us.
Or you can put it parentheses, see, Article B, but I, I wouldn't delete the Article Six.
Should I just talk to town council and ask them about the issue?
Great, 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 great.
Attachment A or attachment B?
B.
A, see, and it is legally, like, attachment A is legally part of it. That's what we're voting on, we're voting on our general operating budget. In this case, attachment B is part of the warrant, and it's just legally part of it.
Yeah, let's not, let's not turn to those.
That's where you specify the use of those things.
Okay.
If they.
Dick, if you wanna state your opinion, state your opinion, but I can't sit there and allow you to make legal pronouncements, I don't know if that's true or not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's not appropriate, and it could be dangerous.
Okay.
That's a step too far.
Well, we're going, we're gonna have the words in attachment B.
To move along.
See, it says in Article, as stated in attachment A, all right, that's not the same as what you just said, it says, it, it says as stated in attachment A, you wanna mimic that, that's fine, but don't go kill the reference to the article.
Yeah. Maron for the next.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm suggesting that under Article ten, this, the new one on revolving funds, we do refer to parks revolving funds, cemeteries revolving funds, in the case of conservation, it simply says conservation. There, there may be a way of, we wanna be more careful of which conservation revolving fund, or simply to say at least conservation revolving fund, it seems awkward to not have an equal level of definition as we have for the other ones.
All right, I'll just check last year's and make sure that what's in the bylaw is then repeated in here, maybe that was just left out for someone.
Great.
Okay, next.
Um, next, um. All right, I'll go skip. Um, so this is under the records, uh, the one we were talking about, which is, uh, Article, uh, thirty, twenty-third, twenty-third.
Twenty.
This is, this has to do with the explanation. It, it is important to be able to explain to people what things are, in, in this particular case, I'm, I'm concerned that it's particularly long, if you, if we compare it to a lot of the other ones, however, the, the real issue is, I, I, there are a couple of things that I think we want to take out, because we're begging to be asked at town meeting to justify this, in my mind. So, I'm going to take, uh, the end of the third line, starts out with technical information management services will be necessary for the town to inventory, organize, okay. I think it's a challenge to put those words will be necessary for the town, simply say, technical information, uh, technical information management services will inventory, organize, whatever.
Okay, fine, that's good.
Thank you, and then, uh, if we go down to, uh, third, about the seventh line down starts services, services will be necessary to ensure, I would simply say services will ensure.
Ensure, okay.
Yep, okay, lastly, uh, near the, near the end. It says, uh, we, we're talking about duplicate records, and it says, this project will enable the town staff to identify duplicate records and, as required by law, to request permission from the secretary to destroy them. I don't know that it's necessary to get permission to destroy duplicate records, in other words, if I make a copy of the warrant today, and we do need to keep a copy of the warrant in our town, whatever else, for a long period of time, I don't believe I have to get permission to destroy every duplicate copy that we have, so I'm concerned about trying to put that.
You're correct, I think it's being very literal, and, and I can kill it, but.
I, I think, I think we need, what's that?
You're being very literal, um, and I understand that.
Which the citizens might just be, when they're reading this and talking to us at town meeting.
Well, what do you, what would you suggest we do, because technically, you're right, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, what, how would you like it to read, my point was that we need to identify duplicate records, and we also need to identify places where they are in more than one place, so we can get rid of one, and then if there's another place that we're holding them, that we are required to.
I think that's great, so, I think that's great, I just wanna take, I think you wanna take the thing about the state.
Talk about the positive rather than negative, the negative is destroying, you could say, um, uh, identify duplicate records in order to establish one official town document.
Yeah.
It, it, to reduce unnecessary paper, unnecessary records, and that's all that it is, excellent, right, and, and just take the reference to the state requirement to destroy duplicate records, to destroy records, yes, but not duplicate records. So I just take the whole thing about the state part out, and then do what, as John said. Could, could I just, one more, I, I'd kind of like a question, this is somewhere in the middle, let me just read it, technical and perfec, uh, no, no, uh, oh, yeah, 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 okay. I'm reading from the middle, files can be inventoried, catalogued, and organized in accordance with state requirements. I don't know that the state requires us to inventory and catalog, categorize and organize, we do have to have a way of finding records, but.
It say organized period.
Yes, excellent, excellent, excellent.
Switch something, is this?
It's right in the, it's right in the.
Right in the middle of it.
Right in the middle.
Uh, where it says, uh, starts with the line accordance, starts with the word accordance.
Oh, accordance with state requirements?
Yeah.
So what do we, just organize period?
What we wanna do. Organize period.
Period, okay. Okay.
Great, okay, Article thirty-first, um, yeah, I, I'm not sure how, I thought we had this one fixed in, uh, this, this afternoon, this morning, rather. Uh, what's here is not wrong, however, it's not, it's not within the way Topseal has typically done it, as a matter of fact, the next article down does it the way we typically do. So I would just ask that we change the wording, again, it's not wrong, but change the wording to the standard that we would have, and so, in the warrant, the first, it starts out with, to see if the town will, but after the word bylaw that it read, with the provisions to be deleted, shown in strikeout, comma, as follows, colon. And I actually just copied that from the, I, from the item below. Just, just as standard, if you could do that.
I mean, you changed the item below, that's why you probably.
Yeah, well, I mean, I use the text.
Okay, so Town Council suggested this language.
Yes, I understand, and, and, as I say, it's, it's not wrong, but the problem with the Town Council doing it, is they deal with many towns that do it in different ways, and there are different councils at K P.
So how many extra words would you like to add, and what should it say?
And one council reading, one. I, I'll, I'll give you the stuff at, at the end, but basically, it says, I, 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 basically.
No, no, I need it now, because the deadline, the ship is sailing on this cruise.
Got it.
We need to know what it is anyway, we're gonna vote for it.
Here it is. With the provisions to be deleted, shown in strike-through, comma, as follows, co, uh, colon.
With the deletions.
With, with the provisions to be deleted, shown in strike-through.
With the provisions. The provisions to be deleted in strike-through.
Show, shown in strike-through.
As shown in, as shown.
No, just shown, deleted, shown in strike-through, with the provisions to be deleted, shown in strike-through, comma, as follows.
With the deletion, with the provisions to be deleted, shown. Okay.
But there's no change to the actual.
No, we fixed that, we fixed that part already. And, okay, uh, I just would add, this is under, um. Thirty-two, in the recommendation from the FinCom, it says ta, it, it says table of contents, all as described under, just put a comma after table of contents. And, uh, under the, the. Article thirty-third, similarly, um, in the recommendation, table of uses, comma, all as detailed.
Well, earlier, you didn't put a comma, so I didn't put one in there.
Okay.
Can you repeat the last one? It's just a comma.
It's just a comma, it's easy, it's easy, because it breaks it before the on.
It's called the, it's called the Oxford comma.
I, I have a, I, I, I don't know the answer to this, but I'll, I'll take some help if I can get it, on, uh, the, the overlay, Mar-a-Lago overlay article, um, under seventeen point oh two. The reference here is lot one of Assessors Map forty-five.
There it would be, where are we?
This is, uh, thirty-five, Article thirty-five, seventeen oh two.
Page thirteen, seventeen point oh two. Page fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Two thirty.
I, I just don't know, it.
Seventeen point oh two.
And it's not critical, but maybe we can make a writer or something, it says lot one of Assessors Map forty-five, I believe that's in a, a possessive, assessors, right? Just put a, a pesky in there for Assessors Map, I don't know.
We didn't put it in earlier, so I didn't put one in, but if that really.
I don't know, I'm not, I, okay.
If you want to change the.
Whatever.
Um, can I have one thing, I have just one point right here, um, is this the mock-up of what we go to the printer?
Pretty much, yes.
So I noticed that the font size changes for Article thirty-fifth.
Uh, for thirty-fifth.
And to make it consistent with the others, I'd say pages fifteen through part of nineteen, need to all be put in the smaller font.
Yeah, yeah, I'll check that. I'll just double check the font. Okay, yeah.
And it was added afterwards.
Yep. Good catch, thank you.
And then, and then it, under nine, in that, in that same, uh, set of things, it, it goes one through nine, um, the, because there's two O's in a row there, under nine, M, M, C P C's operation, comma, or the expiration or termination. There, there's two phrases there, one is a succession of operation, comma, and then the other phrases are expiration or termination.
Where are you again?
So this is under no, number nine.
Top of eight, nineteen.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Pardon me for excusing myself, but as I mentioned, I have meeting mask on.
I understand.
Thank you very much, get in touch if you have anything, but thank you.
See, thank you.
This always fun?
I know, I'll get more fun elsewhere.
One there next, thank you. Okay, just a comma after the, after operation there, please.
Um, oper, hold on, I just, operation, or the exp, okay, again, you didn't put that in earlier, so I did.
Yes, yes, yes. And, um, okay, and then, uh, lastly, I, I, under, uh, the referendum question, we typically number the questions, and that's how they show up on the ballot and things like that.
Very specific.
So I'm, I'm just saying to add, this is under, it says non-binding referendum ballot question, it should start out, and we typically do it in all caps, question one, colon.
I, um, um, I ran that by Town Council, and she said that there's a law that says you shouldn't, you can't put a title in for, for a non-binding question, it's very specific, and I did put a header before, I took it out because she said that that isn't, she made the reference, um, and I don't know what.
So I don't really see it as a title, we're, we're numbering.
If we're gonna have a question, we need to follow Town Council, because it's very strict as to what you can put on the warrant and what you cannot, so I'm following her counsel with all due respect.
Okay.
Well, I think that becomes an issue if you've got more than one.
It certainly is an issue if you have more than one.
With one. Yes.
Yes, right, and so.
When you got one, I don't think it's.
Yeah, so one, one thing I note on this, she did mention that there's another alternative to putting a question on the warrant, and she said that we could ask the moderator to poll the members of town meeting during town meeting, um, again, it would be a non-binding vote, but that's another option for us, if we prefer to do that, instead of putting something on the warrant.
On the ballot.
On the ballot, on the ballot, and in the warrant, I mean, we're printing, basically, this is the election warrant, that's within the, within the warrant, so, that's the other way you could handle it.
But I think, I just find this, I think we totally, I don't know, we totally, so.
We did tell.
It seems to me you get a broad.
We did tell, but it would be a.
We said we were trying to have a ballot.
You could do both.
I think I couldn't on an election.
You could also do both if, if you prefer, it's a matter of preference, she, she should, she suggested.
And then I would ask that we just take out, this question is non-binding, because.
That is legally required. You can't put a question in here that isn't legally required.
Good. Good.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, that's it.
I suggest we continue with the approach we were going to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, just the way it is, I might be.
Okay. All right.
Now, warrant for special town meeting, we got that too?
Special. Yep, um, that's, that's in the book.
Yeah, mine's at the end as well.
You'll be right after.
Mine's just where it's supposed to be.
Just where it's. You wanna be spent.
Debbie, Debbie bailed me out again, or do I get something?
A sticker.
Don't spoil it, good time, man, never get it back, that one starts spoiling it.
Get a sticker. Um, sorry. Where's mine? Oh, here it is.
Right at the end, I think, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I thought I did, I mixed it up with the other stuff. Okay. Uh, so this is gonna be all new, I can give you, okay, oh, here's one thing I just noticed when I was doing the special town meeting, the Proctor School Woodbury Yard Auditorium, on the special, I write sixty Main Street, and, but it's not on the annual, so do I take it off a special, or do I add it to the annual to be consistent?
Uh, yeah.
You're saying the address is sixty, is that the issue?
Yes.
Sixty four.
Yeah, it's not really an issue, it's a preference.
Sixty four in there. Thank you.
Sixty Main Street.
Probably does.
It, it does, yeah.
Sixty Main Street, I'll add that to the special, to the annual town meeting.
Good catch, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, I'll do that in caps as well. Okay, prior year bills, you're not aware of any transfer of funds, that stays as a recommendation pending further review. Article fourth, I'm waiting for to hear back from Town Council on the exact wording of the form of this for the, um, so I should be here, I'll, I'll check my email as soon as we leave, just to make sure, but this may change, and then as soon as I get these changes, I can send them out to everybody tomorrow, um, I hope that there's not too much in here, though. But that was one I wanted to check on form for both the article and for the motion. Was there any comment on the, the, um, explanation? I did update the numbers, I did, it was two twenty-seven, that, two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars that was approved, I added in the reference to the title of the, um, town meeting warrant article that was at the two thousand fifteen special town meeting, so that's been updated, um, so that's pretty much it.
Okay, so, uh, we're, we're really clean here, because we only had one special town meeting, I'm pretty sure that year, but I think it'd be appropriate in the recommenda, in the recommendation to put in May of the, uh, two thousand fifteen special town meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, programming space, this hasn't changed too much, um, I'm just looking, I'm just waiting to get the budget line for transfers, we'll be reviewing all of those with Town Council. Um, this mostly, I basically took last year's and then updated the description, um, and then everything else is pretty much the same, the tasers, traffic safety equipment, I changed the name of the, um, budget line, would be the property and liability insurance budget, would be the appropriate line reference to the budget. Oh, and I need to put itals under Article seven in the description. And then.
Say, say again, say what?
Um, on Article seven, page three of five.
Yeah.
The description, I need to make sure I put out italics there, so it's consistent with the rest of the formatting. Um, Article eight, I have to line up exactly, um, I need to list out all of the actual A T M warrant articles, so this will be slightly lengthy, but it's in relation to all of the warrant articles that we're basically taking money from to help pay for the truck, so there's about sixty thousand dollars worth of them, and then I'll also, so the, uh, one remaining line will be, where is the act, the additional funding coming from, and so we are working, um, with the financial management team to figure out where those excess appropriations are, typically, they'll come from, um, the insurance lines, the, um, in this case, we had somebody from the property insurance, property liability, we have, I think, about nineteen thousand from the, um, and we'll have to use some of this for snow and ice, which is why I haven't put anything on here yet. Typically, we have the early pay discount for the pension payment, the pension assessment, and then the health insurance fund is usually, those are pretty much the three pools that we would have available excess appropriations to use at the special town meeting for transfers, so we're just gonna fill in those blanks, uh, once we sit down, once I sit down with the accountant, and identify those.
I can tell you right now, also, you mentioned snow and ice, I can tell you that we're about twenty-five thousand bucks in the bucket. For snow and ice.
Yeah.
The whole year?
At, at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're.
That's pretty good.
Twenty-five thousand over, yeah.
Oh, that could be.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's where you got saved with this form, it didn't seem as bad.
Well, yeah, I, we'll have a little bit, but, uh, they didn't do it.
All the magnitude we got.
They didn't do any plowing, they did some sanding and sculpting.
Yeah, very good, yeah. Um, okay, so the peg access fund, um, I just, I just noticed I gotta fill, I have to. Okay, so the peg access fund, I just, I just noticed I gotta fill, I have to fill in one of my blank spots there, but that's pretty straightforward. I added the numbers of what, the numbers that we need for that. And then, let's see, I did a chart for Article Ten for the capital equipment and put in the exact numbers. Okay, so, and I just noticed there's sort of an orphan there that I'll take out or change the description. And then finally, the public records management software. Tonight, I'll get a sense from the FinCom how they wanna handle that request. And then we'll follow up appropriately. Everything else is pretty much the same as what we have with the, with the annual town meeting. Should be it for the special town meeting warrants. We have the moderator's letter that I'll be emailing to him. Well, I've already emailed it, but I'll ask him for his, and so that's all ready and we'll put together those final pieces Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday.
It's the Fin, FinCom letter?
Yeah, the FinCom letter, the moderator letter.
Oh, it's the moderator letter, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, just, we have those all already in queue. We just need them to finish them and get them to us with their final numbers and we should be good.
Hey.
Did that, by any chance, just go over the election part and feel very comfortable with the list and everything?
Yes, in fact, I got my list and checked, I got my list from her list and then ran through.
Oh, she issued a list to you and you used it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we don't yet do this electronically. You plan to make a couple of changes.
I can analyze you right now.
Just a second. You plan to make a few changes here, we just discussed. My suggestion is you hold it, I think we can wait another twelve hours or whatever to incorporate them, to get it up to the most recent and then send it out to us.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
I think if we have it within twenty-four hours, it would be, it would be great. Then we'll have it all the weekend or a while.
Yeah. Yeah, I have all of my information here from that position we're open. So, yeah.
I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that we would be going to executive session.
Oh, yes.
Do you still wanna do that?
Yes, just, yes, please. It's for the asking.
Yeah. We will be going to executive session to discuss collective bargaining or litigation.